To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you everyone for coming. We've got a meeting, we've got four trustees here, so the meeting has been beautiful and they're going to keep on. Again, thank you everyone for coming. Food store, just like to remind everybody.
If you buy a lottery ticket and win, you have to give the village something.
You can take pilot payments to do taxes.
For the trustee of your section.
Stop signs for sale. Okay, first order of business is that we have a volunteer firefighter here.
Cody George.
Thank you for coming.
Cody, as you know, Chief Gallo is at work and the other three assistant chiefs are at a training session. Cody is joining us and he is the sixth member of his high school class. I won't read all the other five who already joined us who have joined the volunteer department. Cody presently works here in town at Morgan Stanley located on Franklin Avenue and he anticipates applying his abilities and helping the department. And welcome and thank you for joining the best volunteer fire department on Long Island.
Thank you very much. Parked truck outside the office. Well, thank you very much.
Don't get me mistaken. Would you say a motion, you don't just swear.
Get a motion, trustee Delaney?
Yeah, trustee.
Second by Deputy Mayor Truve, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, we have our agenda out, usually we have our staff and trustees run through the agenda items to kind of give a little more flavor on the more important things. Then we just move to the general type of topics and comments and citizens can ask questions, more questions if they have any about agenda items. So if we could start, Mr. Swasey, your staff wants to talk about something on the agenda.
Mayor Gordon, just want to point out that item number three on the human resources on the Thursday's agenda, the New York State sexual harassment policy. This was issued by the New York State Department of Health, it's their final model policy and training guidelines which are effective October 9th of this year. And every member of the village will have to be trained on, including volunteers, by next October 9th. Vaughn Shona King, our labor council reviewed the policy and gave us a version that makes us compliant and as we were prepared before the board tonight to vote on.
Some of our employees have already been through the Vaughn Shoney training sessions, is that correct?
Yes, they reviewed it, but this is come familiar with it, but the entire staff, including, I believe, my executive board members, volunteer firefighters, anyone who is employed or works within the village construct has to be trained in this by next October 9th, so we have to set up. We're going to have a training firm come in and train us on October 30th, a large group, I don't know if we can do the train to trainer, or if we have to have multiple sessions, but we will make sure everyone's sponsored.
Can they do a train to trainer where they can go out?
I don't know if we can do a train to trainer, but that would be an option, versus bringing back the company multiple times to train trainer, if it's a way we can go, that's what we do.
Joe? Yes, thank you Mayor, I'll talk about item number five. The village is engaging with land engineering and environmental to assist us in the water department with our emerging contaminant action plan. So the village water supply, just for information, is something that's tested on a daily basis, we meet all federal, state, local standards in regards to safety and quality. But there are things called emerging contaminants which are being investigated, things like TFOs, PFOAs, and one four dioxin. These are not unique to Garden City, they're not unique to almost any water supply around the country. But there are currently no federal, state, or local standards for testing these emerging contaminants, nor are there any approved treatment methods for them. Nonetheless, the village has created an action plan that's a lot to get ahead of this potential issue. This agenda item is one of the steps in that plan. Land engineering, a leading experts in the field in one four dioxin remediation, in fact, one of the employees at the firm, Thomas Moore, literally wrote a book, is the bible on treating one four dioxin. So the village is taking steps to get ahead of this. We are consulting with other water districts, I had a meeting this week with Western Nassau Water. They had a pilot program in place to test some methods for treating some of these contaminants, one four dioxin. Their pilot program showed some promising results and we are going to pursue that further on our end. I'm going back and reviewing some of the current water treatment capital projects that are in the pipeline and we might come back to the board in terms of changing the scope of these projects to address these issues going forward. But it's something we'll have to deal with due to the fluid nature of this issue.
Changing the subject, how do we stand against the county?
So we've gotten approval from the state to move forward with the water tower. Thank you to the mayor who assisted us in that. And we're just waiting now for the county health department to, for the final sign off and we'll be ready to proceed.
Doesn't the state overrule the county?
The D E C approved it on the state level, the health department approved it on the county.
Let's assume it's approved in the next two weeks, can we start? Do we have to wait until the springtime?
No, we can start now, there's some preliminary work, we're still waiting to change the three valves on all country group outside of the tank in order to control the water flow, but we're ready to vote.
Thank you.
Somewhat contingent on the contractors.
Well, that's true, yes, the contractors have been waiting, they have deployed some of their assets and other jobs because they've been late on this one, but we've been speaking to them, so I think we will be able to get a plan and place pretty quickly.
Joe, is there any delay when we switch over from tank to tank? Because we're going to use Minneola's water tank.
No, actually we use West Hempstead.
West Hempstead, okay, is there any delay again?
No, we've been in contact with West Hempstead, we're there, they're on board with this and we're ready to, there shouldn't be any issue with that.
Joe, why did we switch?
We had some, Minneola had some concerns, they weren't, I didn't feel that they were fully committed to to helping us, they had some concerns on their end, their engineers advised them, they weren't sure it was a good idea for them to do it in terms of the different pressures between our systems and theirs. You know, our engineers seem to be comfortable with it, their engineers weren't, I didn't want any propaganda to do or anything like that, so I moved on to another village. I mean, I'm surrounded by nine water districts, so there are other options.
We also had the option, if you couldn't find a, also compatible tank in the city, we had the option to maintain pressure through booster pumps, maintaining, they'll stay self enclosed in our own system, but that's a juggling act to keep the pressure at the right rate. It is the best way to go, have pressure, have pressure pump in another tank.
And once we start, Joe, how long is the project expected to take? Ten to twelve months.
So what is the next step for now?
We'll wait for the final approval from the county department of health, we are moving forward with the valve replacement work in all country, we don't need to help talk to people for that. So that will start, and then it's just a matter of setting some dates with the contractor, they need to mobilize their assets and their subcontractors. Got to clear the trees, that's, yeah, that's more.
It's really demolition, the crew that does the demolition goes down and does the project because of the delays on half, but like you said, they'll get a roll on that most of the time.
Go back to number five, do we get a sense of how long it's going to take to put it together? For this firm to come up with it, why not? Well, we haven't, you know, this is tonight, we're asking for approvals, actually engaging them, so once we do that, you will, you know, we've already reached out, our environmental council has reached out to them, so we're ready to move forward. We presented our plan, I presented my plan to the board and we're ready to move forward with it right away.
So this is an manifestation, the board received, but it's multi-faceted, no silver bullet, it's even options, it's expanding, exploring scope on the capital programs we have in the pipeline. It's communicating with what's evolved in the field, it's sought by our own consultants, so there's no one, it's really
Multi-faceted process.
And as Joe says, fluid, that's a good thing for water.
Okay, I think I just wanted to put a little meat on the bones on number four, this is not to actually hire a particular firm, it was just, we thought with all the changes going on around us, especially with Sears now. We need to get some advice from real estate zoning tax council, so trustee Delaney had brought up, we got to really start thinking about what happens on Franklin, we've got Sears, we've got Wood Taylor. So that was the reason we put them forward, so we really need to action it, I guess, we could generically say, yes, let's hire someone particular.
I think most of my fellow trustees know my feelings of how important it is to move forward. And I know the mayor is looking at a number of options, so we can move forward. The other thing is, I would really like to remind the zoning change committee, I think we really, really, really need to look at the zoning on Franklin so that it can be included, residential can be included. We know that there is a couple facilities on Franklin that could very well be turned into residential and I'd rather have that happen sooner than later. That would also help us immensely with some of the lawsuits that we have been involved in. So I'd ask that committee to consider Franklin, take a look at the possibility of changing the zoning on Franklin to residential, or to include residential as a permitted use on Franklin.
Do you have a moving incentive? Or it depends on that?
Yeah.
Okay, so again, we don't really need to focus on it being on the incentive. Approve the hazard if you want and then settle to finding someone who likes that. Still have to come back and approve the specifics, but we'll have. Okay, now let's, anything else on the agenda, pretty short, but generic topics, not on the agenda that any trustee you want to talk about or staff generally?
I just wanted to mention that the, I want to thank the engineering department and specifically village engineer Craig Mandine for getting the new L N D lights up at the Y parking field. They're installed yesterday and electrified by our contractor, we sold them the contract for wiring, but they're over there now.
Mayor, is he working?
Well, I'm going to go the way after you, if you want to. I'm over there on right now.
I'm sure Commissioner Hare will say something about it, but our police department really made some great arrests this week. And it all has to do with stopping motorists staying. I'm again, in my night of timidity, amazed at the amount of people who drive through this village with suspended or no licenses at all. And in addition to that, they have usually a couple arrest warrants outstanding as well. Our guys are out there, my guys and gals are out there doing the right job at the right time.
Almost on a weekly, daily basis.
Daily basis.
Mayor, I'd like to mention one other thing, at the last board meeting, I mentioned that I've been coming back to this board at this meeting with a request for twenty some thousand dollars for clearing the limbs near the traffic lights, but our parks department, thank you Kevin, thank you Swasey, Joe Scapator, has taken on the task. Out of twenty-five nights, they're originally going to clear only seven, but they've cleared eighteen so far, but the remaining seven, so that twenty-three thousand dollar price tag has been avoided. The cost is a little overtime because some of these locations are heavily traveled streets like Clinton and Washington, so the overtime allows them to work on Saturdays when there's less day-to-day work with traffic.
And we also should look at the stop signs that might be blocked as well as the traffic lights.
Kevin, on that point, is Clinton still one of those interceptions?
Yes, it is.
Just what it means.
Well, one thing I want to talk about was leaf collection and storage process. This has come up many times in many years. I think we got to address this sooner rather than later, it's causing lots of problems, it's a cost, it takes up lots of space. We don't have, for example, five-five-five steward anymore to put snow, so we need a place for snow. It causes rat problems and other vermin problems. It's also a waste of manpower in terms of having to have someone turn over leaf piles weekly or daily or whenever it is we do it, so.
It's about a week a month that we have to
D E C comes?
The mulch pile is always seen by the D E C, we need to maintain it, we need to turn the mulch on a monthly basis, it takes about a week to turn everything that we have there. We have about two years' worth of mulch stored down at the yard in a large area. We will clear about a year of it out now for the upcoming leaf season, which is looking like we're going to start somewhere in the beginning or whatever. But that's the process we have in place right now, collecting leaves and storing for mulch. We don't, I, you know, I've had
We don't use the mulch.
We don't use the mulch, but we do, no, we don't use the mulch, it is free for
We have no records, analysis of anybody who is taking it, we don't even know, like you just said, it'll get down to like a year's worth because private parties have taken it?
Well, we know, we, we, private commercial companies will come and take it.
I know, but you don't have a record of who took it, right?
All right, so, no, just to clarify that, so what we do is we spend our money to collect the leaves, we spend our money to turn the mulch, to follow all the regulations. And then the landscapers, who don't collect any leaves, who just dump it in the street, they then come in the spring and then they take the mulch to basically use for their customers that they end up charging them and they get the mulch for nothing.
Well, no, it's, it's not, it's more of big commercial companies, the mulch needs to be treated, it doesn't break down any year. They have to sift it first of all because it's picked up over the street, so it's
Well, it's also what they do, they get it for nothing.
There is, yes, they do get it for nothing.
They get it for nothing, okay.
But it's not usable, they don't get it usable by, they need to treat it first to make it usable.
Who's coming to take it?
There are a number of companies, mostly from Suffolk County, Long Island Topsoil, Everhard, I believe is another one, they take large amounts and they need to cover up the debt expense. They will come to large truck trailers and dump trucks and take it away.
If that is true, the way that works, can we make an arrangement, there's all sort of possible alternatives here, right?
And we've called, I've called some, I know we've all called some, try and get people to, can those people, can we make a deal with it? Look, you can have this for free, but you got to take like, at the end of the fall, all of it, so we don't have three acres of mulch fields sitting around, just cut it down to
They're taking years' worth essentially.
Joe, we have, do we have this up on the screen? But we have four acres of this stuff, so if we cut it down to, we collect it in the fall, sometime over the next two months, they take it away, it only has to be an acre. Just make the pile higher, who cares, it doesn't have to be all spread out, all, and we get that space back, if nothing else.
When we, when the village needs mulch, do we use our own mulch or we?
No, so literally, we have no use for this.
No, it's not, it's not a quality product.
We find that it has a high sulfur content, some kind of mulch that you compost and you put it in flower beds and repeat that shit we have around town. We can never go through that volume anyway.
Let me ask a follow-up then, is there any reason to keep, or is there any service that'll just take it out?
Well, that's a
Right, yeah, that's
No, I don't mean take it out of here and store it on four acres, I mean, just give it
Well, that's what they do, they come, they'll be coming in in the next few weeks and pull it out a year ago.
I, yeah, we're storing it for a certain amount of time, what I'm asking is, is there really to pick the leaves up and get them out of the village immediately, so it's not to take up four acres?
Well, the other, the other aspect that we should consider is, is this, is it now time for our landscapers to take the leaves from the residents? And for the residents to do their own ones, for them to put it in bags, and for us not to have piles of leaves everywhere throughout the village, so that's another thing.
I know Ralph and Joe have been also asking, like, what is doing
Sure, so, for example, Rockford Center actually has, used to give the residents bags, they would beg them to take it away, they've actually stopped that practice and they actually don't do anything to their residents anymore. It's all on the residents to deal with their leaves. Minneola collects it along with the garbage and disposes of it with the garbage, they bring it to the bank and burn it along the streets, rest of the household away.
That is viable option. I don't mind that we pick the leaves up, it seems ridiculous to store it, have rats hang out by the pile of stain for four years.
Everyone looks, that's it, up on the screen, see that sort of four rows?
Rat row.
Joe, would we not, if we're delighted, would we not just simply take the leaves and just throw it away?
Why don't we do that?
We pay seventy-two dollars.
So, for example, Joe?
Would it answer our costs?
Yes. If we paid someone today, paid them to come in and take it all away, all of it, so now we're starting fall, all we would have is this fall's collection, right? Let's just make something up, maybe it's just this much space, and next fall, we pay that person again, you take that away, so we never have to gain all this space, which we're going to need, right? You need it for, to store trucks, you need it to do snow, we can use that space and it gets rid of the rats.
Joe, I just want to go back one question. How many tons of leaves are I don't know the weight, so about thirty thousand cubic yards, I believe, I'm not sure what that converts to, I don't know. Specifically, when it's every
And I, just so you know, we did, I did, I know they did, I called a couple places, like Islip, Islip runs a facility, where they actually clean it, grind it, blah, blah, but they're like, no, we're not, we have enough, we're not taking it. We tried a
I talked to the organic, I see him all the time.
Long Island compost that things
Yeah, I was like, I asked him, I was hoping to sell this, I'll give it to you for nothing, but he'll take it away from us if we pay him to take it, which is just disposing of it. I also talked to MacArthur Compost, the website you sent me, and they have more than enough compost, but he put me in touch with a person named Ray who I called, I haven't gotten a call back yet, but Ray came in and Ryan stepped down and they did a more fine product which would help accelerate the decomposting process. But that's just going to
These guys are taking it from us and they're not charging us, they're just taking it, right?
I'm talking right now, yeah.
So why couldn't they take it if you did?
Thousands of dollars.
Can they take it ahead of time, I mean, why do we have to store it, I agree, can they take it before it gets to that?
I can ask them, I think there needs to be a decomposition process before they'll accept, these guys will accept, but if we just throw it out, we can just let it go.
Like we did the Minneola method, just
Yeah, but it's seventy-two, seventy-two dollars.
No, no, I agree.
Do we have
Where are we talking, can we, can we just
Should we pick up
Look at the cost of each of these options, there's a hundred options, sorry, so why don't we just look at the cost of each, some can get it, throw it out with garbage, a lot, and then we can make an intelligent decision. Yeah, I think everyone, I think people we haven't voted, but I think most would agree that it's ridiculous to spend that much space for basically just a pile of raw leaves. And it doesn't even sound particularly useful.
Do we fill this up each year? Every year we fill it up.
Not all. How much of that pile is like the
That's two years' worth.
That's two years.
Well, you basically always have
As long as they're rolling, two years.
It's one point three five tons per year, even here, I do that on each, I
I mean, it may be worth even calling Covanta and ask them, do they need a product, I understand what they are, they need a product.
Covanta will just burn.
I don't understand that, but maybe they would cut us a deal, if they need product to burn, would they maybe give us a deal on one shot, you know, half of it would get unloaded.
How much does Covanta charge for?
Seventy-two dollars a ton.
I thought seventy-two dollars a ton was, you threw it in the harbor.
How much, how did you say, only pound?
It's one point three five tons cubic yard, and you say you have thirty thousand cubic yards? About forty, forty thousand tons.
And the company said, take it from us at the end of the year, what would they charge to take it?
Especially if we should run a bunch of scenarios.
But even some of these commercial composts, right, we should, maybe they'll take it for less than seventy-two dollars a ton. If they called, the ones I called didn't want to take it. The commercial companies are taking it now, they're coming to take it.
We understand that, but we don't want four acres of this.
Four acres of our property, plus the manpower, plus of course the expenses, so that this way they can have a product in the spring.
Plus the vermin, all on us.
No running out of room, so this will be so hard to show up, I mean, we will take the snow and everything here.
At least it gives us options to do other
Yeah, we would have options.
There's equipment that sits outside, we could, you know, build a Nice lovely steel structure. Very pedestrian nature, but maybe this is the place, right? Okay, I guess that's enough on that, we need to try to figure this out. I want to bring up something else, again, just for discussion purposes, this is mostly a rec, Kevin and I had some emails this week. I had a Boy Scout troop who asked about using senior center, for example, we have a policy of, you know, kind of based on the field renovation, so if you could have the rec department, rec commission kind of rethink. For example, if you were a Boy Scout troop and you wanted to rent the senior center, the current policy would be, charge you twenty dollars a head, a kid?
That would be not every time.
I understand, but we don't charge the POAs, we don't charge the Republican club, the Democratic board, so it's not a real policy, it's sort of an ad hoc thing.
It's on our agenda for next month's meeting.
I mean, I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts on that, but I thought they really should kind of rethink how that works.
I think, I think the charge should be relative to, you know, twenty dollars a head for Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts seems like an awful lot.
Well, I think, I think it's got to be uniformity.
Absolutely.
It's not like a field, it's not like the field house where we kind of built this
And we're going to charge the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, I mean, Republicans and Democrats and, you know, anybody else should be paying, maybe not at a higher rate, but they should pay something to offset our costs.
Whatever it is, I think, I'm more interested in uniformity at the moment, I don't like the ad hoc kind of party rates. Well, there's always a cost, the building exists.
No, what we're saying, yeah, what he's saying is that if you have an organization, if someone is utilizing the facility
And don't we, don't we usually have somebody there? Somebody there, right?
You have to charge them, we can't, we can't allow these organizations to be in there and not be charging them.
That's an older story, we're going to revisit.
Doesn't have to be asked next week, but
Yes, it does, very, very easy. It could be resolved like in ten minutes.
The other thing I just wanted to bring up, and I don't know how the board feels about it, and it's not anything to decide tonight, but there seems to be a there seems to be a historical, what's the word? Bias against pools and our building department's not here. And we're getting lots, I'm getting questions, I know Louis is getting questions. Why do we have these sort of special rules about pools? So, they are structures, but you still have to go to zoning, even if you comply with the general rules. We don't allow people to have lights in a pool, but you can put lights on your house to light the pool, under the theory that lights in the pool have something to do with noise and parties at night, but lights on your house into the pool don't. Uh, there's fencing issues, special fences. I just think we should have some input from zoning as well.
They're right, we thought that fencing is a, is a state requirement.
No, on a fourth foot.
Yeah, we require six. We require six.
There is a requirement for the state.
Yeah, fourth foot. Yeah, and I think what we've been hearing too is that lots of people these days, anyway, it sounds like a great thing, but have the automatic, uh, cover. Uh, you know, for safety reasons, you know, you don't have people, you know, a lot of people falling into the pool, or god forbid a kid falling in. So they're very commonplace now. So the, I believe, and we'd have to talk to, to zoning, that the idea of requiring a higher fence was to make it tougher to get in, to, for an accident to happen, or something a little bit like that. But if you have an automatic, uh, cover anyhow, when you're not using it, seems like overkill, and we don't love the high, high fences anyhow. So why are we requiring that if we could just go with the state law? Fourth foot, especially when you have an automatic cover. So there's a few things that maybe have to catch up with the, um, you know, the, the technology that's available. Um, and it's, I've heard it from multiple, uh, people in the CPOA have, have reached out, so something to look at, for sure. Just holistically, how we're treating pools wise, how's, and so on.
Any else generically people want to talk about? Uh, if I could, Mr. B just came in. Between you and Mr. Swazie, do we get in progress on Nassau County and Stewart Field and, uh, agreements?
We have followed up with a number of emails to the Department of Real Estate at Nassau County, and I understand a, another, uh, relationship was explored today by Mr. Swazie.
I, I actually, um, called one of the people we met when we went to the, uh, County Executive Council. He was in the room, I called him before, and I asked him if he could go in through the back door and kind of check on things. He was like, if anything, move it along. So he said we'd do that for me, I called him this morning on that, but I know Mr. B has followed up at least two or three times, based on our constant, uh, ask. We don't know exactly why we're not getting, uh, without span call, but, uh, try, might try another means then.
That must be another eighteen months before they can look at anything. We were told, uh, the PDW was told that, by the county, that someone requested the traffic commissioners made to Nassau County, they're eight, they're eighteen months behind. So maybe this is the eighteen month rule.
Mr. D. Precisino did rechance Nassau County last week. Today I sent to send you that email, I forwarded to this very same people who've been very responsive to me in the past, and said, "We can't work together, we're not communicating, can you please send someone to get back to us with some expectations on time, so we can talk to our constituents who are looking through us for this?" So I expect the email back today or Monday, if not, on a phone call. The person who sees us back in the record.
Uh, last thing I wanted to bring up generically was, uh, we mentioned a little bit budget process and things like that. At our last meeting, I asked everyone to kind of think about, you know, whether it's one thing or three things that we want to start the budget with. Nothing said in stone, obviously, so I don't know if anybody has any particular, I don't know, important in this. Anybody want to mention anything in particular as they start getting ready for the budget? And I mean, school head sent around, and, you know, they usually start with the premise of try to stay as flat as possible. You know, I, I just, a few things that I was thinking of was, uh, um, that, you know, we always try to identify capital projects, and maybe they're not always capital projects, but like a little more focus on, I'll call it day-to-day stuff, but if we could, between the staff and our employees, get them to, you know, for a month, focus on the little things that are, you know, need to be fixed or replaced, whether it's, you know, a, a fence along the ball field or, you know, trees somewhere that don't make sense, whatever it might be, you know, it's just a little more quality of life, kind of day-to-day stuff. And I know it's hard, you're not gonna get everything, but maybe if we could, you know, the next month or so, kind of think of those things and how we'd work into the budget. Also, uh, like, for example, if we had a, if we know there's an AC unit, and I know we always try to work that into a capital account, but if something's now acted out, make sure that gets somewhere in the system, reflected, you know. You know, I, I, I also feel that we should, uh, make sure that each department works through, now we have an HR, uh, more formalized the HR department, but between, uh, Mr. Swazie and our HR, that anything that would be a new hire or promotion should come through them with their recommendation to the board, through, you know, through, or explicitly be stated in the budget process, so we know exactly who's planning on hiring, whether it's two people or twelve people. So, you know, we can have a hire of twelve people, but, um, I just want to make sure that that gets reflected explicitly somewhere.
So to clarify, if there's a naturally occurring retirement and intended promotion, to call it out, so the board's aware of it, that it's in the budget, that it's not just something happening on the scenes.
And I think everybody's favorite topic, but, um, really would not like to see someone, a department walking in through the budget, uh, process with an expectation of overtime of some amount or more. I don't know if that amount is a hundred thousand dollars or three hundred thousand dollars, but not picking on it, but I don't want to see nine hundred thousand dollars of overtime in anybody's budget. So, if we can focus on those types of things.
Just to tag on that, is there any way we can get, um, an idea of what we can schedule overtime just across the board? Like, we're partway through the process, what do people use, what do they expect to use? I know we're going into another season. Where do we stand with overtime with each of the departments? We need a board to kind of see how that process unfolds over the course of the house.
Yeah, I think we've gone through a quarter, basically.
Yeah.
Can I ask also if we can detail the categories within, when they're decipherable, to break it out?
Yeah.
I think it'll also be helpful, to the extent that we have, you know, we have a certain sense of capital expenditures that was, or a previous part of the budget. Where are we on those? Do we anticipate actually executing on all those that we actually had planned?
I, I'd like to see that before the budget season starts, because every year we seem to get into the budget session, and, you know, we, we find money hasn't been spent, or too much has been spent. So we just get an idea of where some of those capital projects stand.
Well, like with the water tower, it's not anyone's fault, it just happens.
Exactly, that is, we can blame the asset.
Yeah.
Right.
Just need to know ahead of time.
Okay. Well, again, it's an ongoing conversation, you know, people have phone calls or emails or at other meetings, we'll keep talking about it, but at least we can start with the right process. At least some parameters of, right?
There's also things that we deferred over the years, right? Have we looked back to see that it makes sense to continue to defer them until we actually even do, you know, pay the buyer and actually do something, right? So, looking at stuff that we had actually been mounting.
Yeah, I think last year we did a pretty good job of revisiting those things, seeing what we needed or not, but, okay. Again, anybody else with...
Just, just to clarify, and there were some projects that were not, a lot of the budget processes that were ahead of mind for, for aspects, where she said, we can, that we tracked them all, but just differentiate it, they weren't, might not be part of the original budget, but modified the budget.
Right. Okay, um, I guess now we'll move to, uh, any citizen comments on the agenda items? Like, a, a question, or, yes, sir, wanna?
On the agenda, uh, item Roman number nine, third line, it talks about the financial projections of...
No, sir, that's not agenda, we're gonna have a work session. That's a trustee work session.
Is that, so can I talk about that after, at the...
Yeah, yeah. We'll take comments or questions. Again, anyone with an, an agenda item question, which is not, the two work sessions at the, ten, nine and ten. Yes, sir, agenda.
Is, is the mulch an agenda item? I don't have to...
No, that was, it was just a general conversation, it wasn't...
How about the water? We ran out of sheets.
No, okay, just wait, you can...
All right, I got you.
Now the agenda. Okay, seeing none, I guess, um, before we actually vote on the agenda items, what did we want to do about number four? Just approve the concept? So, um, it would be for number four, we're just approving, you can't retain any particular firm, just authorizing the concept of hiring a firm to help us with some of this real estate, zoning, and tax-related issues for, uh, specifically for nonprofit type entities.
All right, we're, we're, we're gonna look to hire somebody, right?
Yes, yes, yes. Hiring anybody.
We're gonna, we're gonna retain somebody.
Yeah, so we'll have to come back and formally, okay, that...
That's a, as the board decides to hire and retain a service, the board will vote on such action, I agree.
Okay, we're just approving the concept of looking for some. Can I get a motion on the, you'll sit, trustee Delaney moves the consent calendar items. Trustee Hayer seconds, all those in favor? Can I see it approved?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to approve the minutes of our primary. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the October four, two thousand eighteen meeting? Trustee Hayer makes that motion, seconded by Deputy Mayor Truve. All those in favor? Can I see it approved? Thank you. So now we work, uh, go onto our, um, I'm sorry, anybody with just general comments from the, uh, Mr. Schmelder, I think this is what you want to...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I gave you an option earlier tonight, but we decided to go with the meeting, so I'll be on it. And Karen, uh, please don't go crazy with the time, if I step on a toe or two, I got a lot to go over.
One minute. We always do four minutes, it's not even you, we always do that.
Regarding mulch, what, I have a question, uh, is it allowed to question competency? Well, I say it is. Okay. Uh, regarding mulch, and, uh, Kevin, he opened, uh, can anyone, in his capacity, if you want, factless? Uh, this is his baby. He didn't want, I mean, why is he being paid the big bucks? Okay, he's silent on this issue.
Andrew, Andrew, I, I will just say this to you right now, I know you have a right to say what you want, but standing up there and personally attacking someone
Okay, so Jamie Chris.
is not something that I'm gonna say.
Well, I got it, I got it, time, time.
We have no problem if you want to say, we think you guys should do a better job cleaning it.
Okay, yeah, well, yeah, well, yeah. Anyone paying attention, uh, to what is happening nationally, globally regarding water? Anybody paying attention?
Yes, sir. I think you missed the portion of the meeting where we, we just approved, uh, hiring a very well-known consultant to, uh, look at our water quality, different parts of the water.
My solution is that one out of the seat from the union. Seriously, seriously. Gain control, otherwise, otherwise it's over. Can't drink the water, and copy values are zero. Got it? Can't drink the water, it was all the pollution, what's groundwater contaminated, that's it, can't drink the water, copy value is zero, okay.
Thank you.
Uh, see, we just consider, uh, regarding the mulch, my letter to then Mayor Lathers, nineteen ninety-four. You gotta read that letter, explains everything, way ahead of its time, explains everything. Okay, uh, start with a, a pit, okay, a landfill, toss in the mulch, cover it, and then we have what's known as nature. It's biodegrade, get it? Make a pit, fill it with the mulch, cover it, leave it alone, and then, because United, one out has already seen it from the union, how we're gonna make money. Tourism, but also, also small, local, organic farms. Small, local, you got two acres, three acres, four acres, a half an acre, grow something, okay? Let nature do it, it's a miracle, you got the sun, you got the rain, whatever, then have like some, you know, uh, day, what's, I mean, it's a way to... And then, uh, uh, a farmer's market, whatever, okay? So, um, that's what you do with the mulch. You supply nutrients for... You supply nutrients for local organic farms, okay? I mean, four acres, oh, I had to hear something, I heard something lawsuit regarding additional housing? What? Somebody's pushing additional housing in this area? I mean, why don't you bring that to my attention, okay?
That's, that's been around about eight years now.
Okay, well, I don't think it's being dealt with, uh, effectively, okay? Because I see the project going on, and I see less of this green space, okay? So, uh, whoever is, you know, asleep at the wheel, I mean, wake up or, you know, handle it. All this overtime, on the bill, I'll take care of everything, okay? I'm looking to the man, these, oh, these mulch, that's money, nature biodegrade, I heard it discussed with Mr. Oker.
About thirty seconds.
No, can I, oh, my motto? Don't cut the grass, leave the leaves alone. Because in October, the wind will come, it'll blow all the leaves and the grass, and you'll have natural mulch, and then you don't have to do anything, why waste tax dollars? I see what goes on with the green trucks, and I see what goes on with the orange trucks. These guys got nothing to do, they sit in their trucks, the idle with the engine on, okay, the engine, okay, the idle, okay? Heck, I mean, so many times, they're like thousands of feet away from the truck, the truck is airing, anybody can jump and go for a drive, okay? I see, I see them talking on their cell phones, I see them having lunch, I see them doing nothing.
Okay.
I mean, back to what I said, Mr. Bolt Bush, I'm sorry.
You're out of time.
Can anybody be more factless?
Thank you, thank you. Uh, anyone else? Yes, sir. We'll take questions or comments during the work session, if that's what you want to talk about.
Okay.
Okay? We don't always, but, you know, we have to take comments. Yes, sir?
Steve Alori, Middle Street. Regarding St. Paul's, I know it was brought up last month, um, it came up at the property owners meeting. Before the Turkey Tribe, are the grounds around St. Paul's going to be cleaned up at all?
No.
And is anything going to be done about keeping the eight or ten thousand people away from the St. Paul's building? Other than those sawhorses?
I'm not sure if we have people around.
For that event, we will put up a tape.
We have people around, right? A lot of police there. Well, then, had a problem with people going into the building and at the Turkey Tribe before, why would we now?
We apparently have a problem having people approach the building to cut the shrubs and the grass, so I'm wondering what's going to stop all those people? When I go to the Turkey, I've gone up to the front doors, I sat on the steps during the Turkey Tribe. What stops people from going against the building?
Well, what happens is prior to this year, um, I don't think that we've had the situation that we have today. So probably what we'll do during the Turkey Tribe is to hook her and his people, we'll have to make lines or basically make it to where they will not be able to do that as they have been able to do in the past because of the condition of the building.
We'll make sure that...
I just think it's a shame that ten thousand people have been come to the village for this race, and that's what they're going to see in St. Paul's.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? General topics? Seeing none? I guess we will, uh, move into our first work session. Um, we've been talking about retaining, uh, sports facilities advisory, management, the company that came in and gave us a presentation on different things they could help us with. Get information, getting some more input from the public, marketing, financial projections, um, but I know we, some members of the board want to have a general kind of conversation as well, so I thought we could wrap this into one, and if we're all okay, we'll move forward with retaining them and whatever else we think we need to do, so. You know, trustee Nito and I have, uh, started conversations which emanated at our, probably our last work session, or I think at one of our meetings. Are there steps we could take now to help preserve parts of the building that we're gonna, uh, use in the future? So I, I know, since... So I know Louis is our primary expert in this area, he's been talking to the engineers and experts, they're trying to put together a plan, is the things we could do. I'll call it stopgap, lack of a better phrase.
Yes, sure. I think the intention is to get a plan and an estimate together on the exact things we can do to seal the building up, prevent any further decay, and, you know, put into motion a series of things that we can do so that, you know, we don't end up allowing things to further decay that we're gonna pay double for once we try to go in and execute the project. So we're putting together that plan now, and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we should have something to look at. And of course, the associates.
Who is coming in today?
The engineers and architects from our original...
B, 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 maybe T?
T, T. So, the engineers, I mean, we have, we're fortunate that one of the the structural engineers on the project happens to live in town on Sackville. And so she's been documenting and taking photographs from our initial conversations with them to now, and she's noticing different places in the building. They're kind of putting it all together just from outside, say, okay, we're gonna fix the roof here, do this, do that. And I would say the biggest, you know, contributing factor to the decay is obviously all the water and all the mulch. So, it's beyond just fixing the windows, we have to really seal up the roof properly. I'm sure there's going to be some shoring of some of the structural matters in there that are starting to decay. And the idea is to get a real comprehensive plan from them and then get costs associated with that, and then bring it to the board for us to look at and talk about, and then hopefully ultimately approve. You know, what we don't want is there to be substantial decay or loss or some sort of structural failure that would then, you know, add unnecessary cost to the project at St. Paul's. So stemming the tide and really sealing the building up proper would be...
Well, that means, should, maybe we get a cost associated with that before we start? Before we start hiring a company to look at what we should put there?
No, I don't, I don't disagree with, I don't agree with that at all, because you don't do that unless you have a plan. What's your plan for future use? And you need a plan for future use?
But right now, we're talking about preserving it not to further decay.
No, we're talking about preserving it to use it.
Not further decay.
To use it. To use it. It's completely different.
Isn't that the same thing?
We need, we need, we need this company or some other company, but these guys are great.
I'm gonna get to it in a minute, but, I mean, you can finish your thought.
To get to the next step, if we're gonna do something, we need them, and this takes time, they need to get more input, they need to do market analysis, they need to use used things. We're not gonna preserve the building to have no use.
Yeah, so if I could jump in on that to explain why I think this particular consultant is very important. We've put together to date an idea, it's a sketch of a dream, you know, it's not, it's not hard, hard facts, not really built on facts. Whether or not we have ice or we have, you know, an indoor turf or whatever the program is, really, these guys helped us figure that out. You heard his presentation the last time, right? So we don't even know if necessarily we're on the right track until we get some hard data to say, look, you know, you want to put ice in there, it's not gonna pay for itself, it's gonna be a huge drain on money, you know, and here are the reasons why. These guys are validating whatever we are gonna ultimately put into the building, and they'll attach a cost analysis of upfront capital plus, you know, the ROI on those particular pieces.
I understand that, because we're talking about water infiltrating the roof and the roof not being, you know, able to keep the elements out, the windows letting in all the elements, those are the things that should be taken care of, no matter what we do.
Exactly, so that's why there's, there's no... No, but, but I do agree with that, we, look, we already had, we had a big vote years ago, right? No one wants it to be demolished. Right now, what we're doing by neglecting it, it's essentially passive demolition is what's happening to the building. Okay, so what we're talking about is, these things take time. Going through and doing a real market analysis and understanding what makes sense in the building is gonna take some time. What we don't have, what the building doesn't have is lots of stuff. I can tell you right now, every time there's a big storm coming up the coast, you can ask my wife, I go like this, like, I hope that clock tower is okay. Literally, because one of those things go or some, there's some kind of tragedy there where we have a real structural failure, and then the people who are on the, you know, the side of demolition, all of a sudden they say, oh, see, it's such a pain in the butt, we should just not do the, do the rest and knock it over. I honestly think that this type of study benefits us because it validates whatever ideas we have about the program. Right or wrong, you heard him, he, you know, the last time when the gentleman from SFA came, he said, look, this, this project could be too grandiose right now. We have to look at what, what this really means for, from, from the capital to the ROI. In the business I'm in, we would never just go and, you know, and build a store without concrete facts and information.
Okay, Louis, Louis.
So, so the point, if I could just finish, so the point, I think, is, I don't think they're, they're linked in terms of getting the building watertight and understanding how to, how to start to stem that tide and doing some market analysis. I think they're two different streams, and
I agree.
And they're not necessarily end on end, they can happen concurrently, or we can do one before the other.
Okay, Louis, who have you looked into who you would use to do all of this protective work on the building, and do you have any idea of what it would cost?
That's exactly what they're working on right now.
They would figure that out?
They're doing that right now, yeah.
They're figuring it out and talking to possible construction managers to do that.
To say, this is what it looks like, and this is how much it costs.
And do you have any concept of when that would begin?
No, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll get the information, then we'll bring it to the board, and then we can, we can talk through it. I honestly don't know the extent of what it's gonna take, you know what I mean? There could be certain decisions we make, like roof windows or this, that, or shoring on this part of the building and not on this part. I have no idea until we see the analysis from, from the experts. But it's, it's happening, it's in progress, we'll see it in the next couple of weeks.
You think we'll have it by middle of November?
Yes. I think we're probably about two weeks ago. I think it's longer than that, but, no, no, I, I was told it is.
The reason, the reason I ask is that we have to move forward.
Oh, alright, so it might be December, sorry, I might have missed an email, it might be December.
Okay, but I think we need to look at it quickly, because if we're gonna preserve the building, I'd like to see that preservation start before winter sets in. Winter is gonna be more dangerous than any other time.
I think it's not realistic to think you're gonna get the plan in place and be able to hire serious construction people to start doing what it needs before a few months. I just don't think that's realistic.
Okay, but they'll tell us. We'll try, we'll go as fast as we can, I'll say that.
So does that, this fee, is that included in the forty-five thousand dollars?
No, they didn't do it this.
Yeah, so just to clarify, Theresa, this, this consultant has nothing to do with the structural or architecture, these guys are market analysis people. They're not necessarily tied in with the construction project at all.
This is to help us get programming. Programming, uses, financials related to that, all that kind of other information, we would need to decide whether this is worth doing.
I'm trying at that, and I think the company is impressive, and we probably should hire them, but I'm concerned about keeping the building, at least we're...
But they're not, they're not...
They're two different things.
Why do you think it's not one and then the other? You do both at the same time, you're losing time. And we're gonna lose them, because they're a big company, they're not gonna sit around and wait for us. They're already scheduling out what they're doing over the next year.
As long as we're doing something for the preservation of the building.
Absolutely, two, two tracks, definitely two tracks.
And we're, yeah, and we're working on it, and, you know, the, the information, the feedback that we, I think was prevailing at the public work sessions was, why this feature, right? Why this part of the program? Why this, or why not this, or why not that? These people will help to give us definitive information.
I'm fine with, I'm fine with...
No, no, just explain also for the benefit of the, everyone here, you know, they, they can validate or disqualify certain things that we've made assumptions on. And I guarantee no one here wants to make a mistake on a major feature or part of the program that we put into building and then that doesn't end up paying for itself or paying back the village and being a burden on everybody.
Well, one of the things, one of the things I think that they should be doing, or they will do for us, is to determine, you know, whether or not, if we have to bond this, whether we will get enough revenue at some point that will pay for the bond, so that the taxpayers won't pay for the bond.
Exactly, and that's, that is their primary goal.
Yeah, that's where I see, I see them, one of their most important projects.
Yes.
First, telling us what we should use, what we should use the building for, and secondly, if we do build the building, how fast can we get revenue that will pay for the bond?
Yeah, absolutely. And any, without any hard core data, everything would be an assumption, without their data.
I agree with all of that, okay? I think we're on the right track, I liked what I saw, I was impressed with all of it. But if the building falls down, so of course there's a lot more to, to...
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
That's why I'm gonna make sure that we're doing something now.
Alright, I can say something on this. Probably like many of the people here, I have seen a lot of concepts and a lot of things that have been presented over the years at St. Paul's. Up to this point, I have to say, I think that the money that this board has authorized to spend to get to where we are, especially with Triple B and everything we've done, is absolute excellent. I think it's, I am a hundred percent in favor of it. The reason for it is, I think it gives us a true understanding of the condition of the building, and it also gives us a vision of what could be. Now, of course, we can sit here and discuss whether or not it's going to be whatever, but the bottom line is, it's gonna be some type of a community sports set. The aspect of putting whatever you're gonna put in there, whether or not it's a hockey rink, or whether or not it's a track, whatever in the world it is, you want to put something in there so that this way it will generate the revenue in order to support all the other things you want to do in the building, and not to be just a tremendous burden on the taxpayers. In my opinion, as you look at this, I think the thing which is positive about what we're doing is no longer sitting here thinking about or waiting for the white knight. Now, I will tell you, I have listened more and more, and for me, I don't want to hear any more of the discussions about how we're gonna have grants and donations to take care of a building that's gonna cost millions of dollars. Bottom line is, I also don't want to listen to all the outside organizations who want to tell us how we should preserve the building and, and here's all the reasons why, but yet, they don't live in Garden City. Also, the aspect of thinking that we can just go in there and cut the grass and put a fresh coat of paint on it and clean it up and fix the windows and you're good to go. The reality of it is, if you stand at any distance and you look at the clock tower, you can see the massive holes that are there. If you're across the street at the middle school, you can see the massive holes that you see in, in the roof of this. So the reality of it is, is that as Triple B went in there, to Mark's point, one of the questions that was asked them of several times is, what's the next step you do? And the next step that they said, preserve what you have. Now, again, I understand the mayor's point, you'd like to be able to preserve, to understand what you're preserving it for, but to me, it doesn't matter what that is. Whatever that usage is, whether or not it's a sports facility, or it's the orchard, whatever in the world it is, you need to take your building and you need to say, how do I preserve what I have currently to then have it to use? Because if I preserve it within the next three months, to six months, to a year, whatever in the world it is, you cut down on your additional deterioration of the building. So to me, that's just common sense.
That's exactly right.
So, but, but I think that the issue is, there's a difference of thought on the board of how you perceive going forward. What I do not want to do, I don't want to go back to the old conversations, I want to go back to the old theoretical stuff, because that's ridiculous, moving forward in a correct direction. But this community needs to figure out, what do we want to do with the building? Guys, there's three choices. Choice one, we tear it down. Choice two, we redo the building as is. Choice three is we redo and we re-change the usage of St. Paul's. In other words, with the concept that was presented, which gives you an opportunity to put many other things in there and still preserve up to sixty to seventy percent of the building. In my opinion, this is something that has to be, you have to get the community involved in this. You have to get the POAs involved in this. You have to somehow work, that we have to work, because to me, in my opinion, this is not a decision that eight people should make. I think this is a tremendous cost to the village, it'll probably be the biggest project that we ever do, and I think this is something that we have to get the community involved. So how we do that as a board, I think is as important as how we move forward. So, that's my opinion.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but part of the spend here, or the consideration of using SFA would be to gather the public input.
That's what they talked about.
So, you know, I would agree, I think we need to figure out what we're going to do, we need to get the public's input. And also, I think we need to look at not just the sports elements, although it's gonna be, it seems like it's gonna be a component of it, we should also be open to other elements that we can use for it.
Yeah, we talked about the cultural stuff.
Absolutely, we need to get the cultural picture as well, and how much of that space should be used for cultural? And the other side is, you know, you've seen what the concepts were, but maybe, I just, it's a waste of time. That's what these people have been telling us. What's the best thing to do, and how are we gonna get the money back that we're spending to put it together? Well, John, not to interrupt you, but I am willing to support that. As long as the process is not what these people are gonna tell us to do, it is what these people are gonna sit there and then get the feedback from our POAs, from our residents, from everything else, put it all together and say, based upon everything that we've received from the community, and based upon our experiences, this is what our recommendations are.
That's my understanding.
I understand, John, I'm, I'm just saying, that's...
Is that not everyone's?
That's what they talked about.
That's what they did talk about, but I also want to hear what would work. I think they, in the process, I want them to collect and have data from the residents, see what's going to be there, but I also want to hear what's gonna work. And as far as preserving the building, it's nice, I want to preserve the building, we all have agreed that we want this architectural gem in our community, but I also want to stay the cost at this point, and without doing both, we're not gonna get there.
We may find the cost so high that we can't do it.
You know, I'd like to say a couple of things. I support, I want everyone in the community to understand that I do support this project. I think it's important for us to make a definitive and intelligent decision on what happens with that building and then move on, because I think it's been hanging over us for much too long. The next thing I would like to say is, I think that having the synthetic field, regulation size for multi-sports, has, I see the concrete justification for that. And we have a letter from the sports organizations informing us that our program for kids is at least two thousand, that's conservative estimate, and I think that is a justified use of the building, I do. Where I start to lose that kind of close clarity is about the ice hockey rink. I really think we need to see a lot of concrete statistics that have been well researched on that issue. If it is something that would provide the revenue, quite frankly, that we're looking for, then I could justify that. But I don't have any idea of whether or not it could do that. I don't know what the maintenance of it is to put it in, the maintenance of the equipment to take care of it, a zomboli or whatever it is, and that when we pick one of those, that pile of money against the profit we might make, simply wouldn't be good enough. Well, I want to know that right up front. Because I think one of the dimensions of this that we have not discussed enough with the community is what it might cost. That beautiful soaring building that we looked at, and quite frankly, all probably found quite attractive with the membrane roof, we had saw some bond figures in the area of sixty mil. I have spoken to a lot of people in the village who have, who have had serious careers in finance, and they have said that they don't think that we could do that doping, it's stunning, for sixty mil. They think it would be much closer to maybe one hundred million, one hundred and ten. All right, well, I want to know that we cannot, you know, wouldn't have to put those kind of numbers on the taxpayers. Seriously, I mean, that's the serious dimension of it. Tell me, tell me one other thing, tell me one other thing. Tell me if we're not happy with this group, SFA, after we go through and pay forty-five per annum for phase one, that we are not committed to phase two. All right?
If that's what you want.
Would you tell me that?
Do you want that built into the contract? We'll build it in.
It's already in there.
But, but you don't get any of the projections?
I just want to be sure.
You have, did you read the contract?
Yes, I did, several times.
So, the contract says what it says, okay? Do you want the financial projections? You have to pay for them. That's the second part of the study.
Well, all right, I just...
Didn't we have a provision that you, you put?
I think we did put that in there.
You put a provision in, in the copy that you and I looked at, that could stop it at the end of phase one, if we're not happy with what they did.
It's a legitimate topic.
I think you can build that in, absolutely.
I think it would be important for that to be there. And I do think too, that if we want to at the end have a beautiful building, and that tremendously long-lived problem we've had with St. Paul's is gone, that we can relax and be proud of it and enjoy it, rather than be troubled over the fact that it's too much of a financial burden. I think that's a very important factor here.
And I'm going to tell you, I mean, that's what I'm looking for these people to tell me, what this thing is going to be. At some point, we tend to look at the cost, and if the cost is too high, my feeling is, we have to do something else. Not, either tear it down, or do something else. I don't think it's usable in any format that we, that, as I understand it from what the engineers say, I don't think the building is usable as it presently is structured. And, and something has to be done with it. But I'm hoping that this study is going to tell us a lot of these questions, answer a lot of these questions as to whether or not, for example, with the ice hockey, if the ice hockey doesn't make us any money, there's no sense having it. And I think we all agree on that. Like I said, I just want to remember, I, I think that, I think that, again, if, as long as what we're going to do with this group is going to be in coordination with the residents and with the POAs, and if we, at the same time, are on this different track, where we take a look and we look to act on the preservation of the building, as long as we can do those two things, I have no problem with voting.
Well, I think the building has to be preserved in any way. We know what we're going to do, I'd say. And B, and B, I would only vote to move forward with the CSAP, SEAP, if they have to go to the public.
Well, if they tell us... But again, John, you know, what ends up happening is that you have to sit there and you have to say to yourself, what we need to do is, we need to have an understanding of cost. Because let's just say, let's just say to preserve the building, it costs you three million dollars, or whatever in the world it is, depending upon the level of preservation that they're going to do, okay? I mean, again, do you sit there and do you do that? Or do you sit there and, and say that whatever we're going to do in the building is, is too expensive? Do we want to, to spend that money on three million dollars to just mothball it? I don't know. But that's what we need to have, I, I'm sorry.
I can't see mothballing.
Yeah, I would want to.
I don't want to see it mothballing, that makes no sense at all. I mean, if you're going to do that, you must have tear it down. If we can't use it for some legitimate purpose, and we've seen what the purpose can be, now, that has to be tweaked. You know, do we need more, do we need a theater in there? Do we need more activity, you know, for entertainment? Do we need an ice hockey ring?
But if you remember, if you go back in your history, that there was a vote. Do we want to tear down St. Paul's?
Okay, let's not, because you can say that about this, and someone can say about that, and yeah. The question is, are we going to move forward with this concept? And to do so, it's two things that have to happen. You have to have validation on some level of the concept, which includes financials, and also, at the same time, because damage is happening, start working on preserving what you can and are going to use. That's the way it's got to happen. You can't go one step and wait another year, and wait another year to do this.
You have to move forward.
All right.
Well, I was going to say that, as long as the community and the POAs are involved.
Why do you keep saying that? I want to understand what you're saying by that, because it doesn't make sense to me. They sat there and said, we will go to all the groups. We sat, we had meetings, we said, come, come look at this, talk to us. We're going to have more. So I'm, I'm trying to understand what it is you're actually saying by that. Please explain it to me.
I think the point on that is that, when all is said and done, if we have not been sensitive and included the community step by step, that that will hang there and rule.
What does that mean? How is it going to be included?
Well, you know, actually, and a lot of people come up to speak to me, one, a woman came and spoke to me this afternoon when I was watching my granddaughter's soccer game, that the community feels they were not included in some, some of the big situations that I think that we've solved well. For example, the firefighters, paid firefighters. They didn't know that, they didn't know that all of that was going to happen. That's what they're claiming. Whether that's actual enough or not, I don't know. But I would like to have the feeling that they have, they understand that their opinion is important.
All right, well, Mayor, you're asking questions, so let me explain to you why I keep mentioning that. The reason for it is, is because, and I think we would not have gotten here unless it was done this way, is I think that both yourself and Trustee Minuro truly have been the spearhead to get us to this point. And as I said right from the beginning, I support it a hundred percent. I think that we have absolutely done so much better than all the other wasted time and money that I have seen spent on this thing for the last twenty-five years. I support it a hundred percent. But, the feeling of the community is that, and at least I'll just say in the West and from people that I have spoken to elsewhere, is that even though we have not firmly said, we're definitely going to go with an ice hockey ring or a track or whatever, the bottom line is, they sit there and they say, well, listen, there's many other things that we think should be considered, or we would like to, whatever. So the bottom line is, is that the residents want to feel as part of the process. I believe that's your intention, but I'm just saying, the reason I keep bringing it up, because it's very important to me, and it's very important to the newest residents, especially new residents.
And this is important to all of us, Bob, and that's what these folks are going to do.
That's what they said they were going to do.
And they say in their...
Like I said, Mark, I, I just...
I mean, it'd be silly to move forward unless we have, unless the residents are included to know what they want, okay? I mean, most of the residents that I've talked to think the concept is a good one, but it has to be fleshed out, and, and what do we really want to put in that building? And, and I agree with you, at some point, we need to get a cost. And if the cost is too high, I'll be asking, if I'm still in this board, I can't vote for it. And I, I also want to see the payback. And, and if the cost is, let's say the cost is sixty million dollars, I want to see how fast we can use the revenue from that to pay the bond so the taxpayers don't have to pay for it.
Well, the taxpayers are going to pay for it.
Well, they're going to pay, they're going to pay for it to begin with, but I'd like to see how fast we can, we can get the bond payment.
Listen, the reality of it is that if we're going to redo St. Paul's, the taxpayers are going to pay for it. What we're going to, we're going to look to do though, is that if we put together the programs as was presented, which makes sense, as I said, if you can have things in there, whether it's hockey, or whether it's the, the track, the field, or whatever, those facilities can generate revenue. That revenue can enable and cover your annual expenses, or maybe more, of operating the building, which then enables you to have other things in St. Paul's that everybody else wants to have, whether it's the arts, whether it's whatever in the world it is. So that's the entire concept, okay? But no matter what, residents are going to be, our taxes are going to be paying for it. And, and again, I will tell you, I've also found that the vast majority of the residents that I have spoken to are perfectly willing to sit there to see something like that, which would add to the value of our community, and which would be, so they're very supportive of it, they just want to be part of the process. So I'm just repeating what I've told them.
I just want to get to say, they're part of the process. I just want to get to that point before the building falls down.
I, I agree with you, I just want to get to the point where we can make that decision. In the terms of the contract, so, I'm just looking at the payout. Is, is this a pretty typical progression in, like, payout in one place? Just seems like by the time we get to the financials, we're seventy-five percent through the contract.
I mean, I, I don't know these guys in particular, but usually with architectural stuff, yeah, the deliverables, you're about seventy-five percent paid.
Yeah, we're seventy-five percent paid, and we have the payment for, which is the first step of phase two.
Good question.
I'm sure there's some flexibility there, we, we start seeing, you know, the hardcore financials are going to be really important in this process, no matter what the concept is.
But I, I think what happens is, I think by the time you get to the financials, they've done all the hard work.
Yeah, that, that's what's concerned me.
So that's why you're paying them, before you get to financials, because they have to do hard work.
And again, we don't get to the financials until we have prospective uses.
Yeah, right, which, a lot of the public feedback, and that goes through that.
Well, I mean, I had suggested some changes, because anybody can make any changes we want, but part of it was, you know, having meeting, making it more clear there were public meetings, POA meetings, meeting with the Rec Commission, all that sort of stuff.
Struggages and all that kind of thing.
Yeah, we'll take comments, sure. Can you come up to him, please?
Good evening. Thomas Cuffin, I'm a resident of Garden City. I mean, I'm looking at this, and I see that this building you're talking about, St. Paul's, was, the cornerstone was laid June eighteen, eighteen seventy-nine by the wife of Alexander T. Stewart. Is this the last remaining building in Garden City from that generation?
No.
Is it the most significant one?
No. You could argue that the cathedral may be as important.
Okay, but...
That's a hard, you know, that's...
All right, but can it be under the historical society or something, so the government assists in putting this building down?
No.
No, that's not going to happen for this.
Not going to happen, no.
Certainly not to cover the amount that's there.
The dollar amounts are too huge, and, and you get too restrictive with whatever position the grant requires.
You know, you, you remember Penn Station? Yeah, they tore it down. You ever see the pictures of it before they tore it down?
Do you know Grand Central Station?
Same thing.
Yeah, the guys we hired, they did Grand Central Station.
Well, great, so why can't we structurally, you know, fix this building so it doesn't fall down?
That's, that's...
But, but, but you have to have a use for it. Are you going to spend, let's just make them a number. Are you going to spend thirty million dollars to fix a building that you cannot use?
Well, if you, if you fix the structure, what makes you think you can't use the building?
Well, more importantly, if I, why do I want to spend thirty million dollars for usage? For what? For meeting rooms? I have more than enough meeting rooms. The, the point is, and I've heard this, I'm sorry, I've heard this since ninety-five, I am not going to sit here, because the thing was built and it is a historic building, that I'm going to sit here and ask the taxpayers to spend, now again, that's my opinion, and this is where the taxpayers, they're the ones that are going to have to voice what they want to do. But I cannot conceive the village spending thirty million dollars just to restore a building so that this way I have an unusable space except for meeting rooms.
And let's tack on, let's tack on to the Penn Station discussion. So, right now, what's happening across the street from Penn Station is what? They're putting a new use to the post office, right, another great architectural building. They are changing it into Penn Station. They are readapting the use so that they could save that building, so that another great architecture, a piece of architecture, won't be demolished. In this case, St. Paul's is more analogous to what the, the saving of the post office than the demolition of the original Penn Station. No one here is suggesting to knock over St. Paul's. We're all trying to find an appropriate use for the next hundred years.
Great idea.
And the idea is to find a use, save the building, and, you know, all of these discussions we're having, we're all basically on the same side of the fence. Everyone wants to keep the building. What we're doing, and we're, we're trying to find out is, what's the best use? What kind of price tag is most palatable? And then how do those things that we fill that building with, those uses, how do they return money back into the system? That's it. We, we can't, and we have to avoid, you know, squabbling about minor things. The headline here for everyone, and we don't have enough facts to make any big decisions tonight, but the headline is, we all want to save the building. We don't want the decay to continue, and we're working on the steps needed to take care of that. That's really what it is. I mean, we can squabble all night, and from ninety-four and this and that, and I grew up here, I heard all the arguments too.
I appreciate that, I just have to move in the direction of just tearing the thing down.
No, 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 there's no, there's no, there's not really a concept.
Yeah.
We have to go on. This is, this is a problem that I have, and I'll get specific. We have meetings, we have articles in the newspaper, we have drawings, we have plans, and people don't look.
They don't come.
They don't come, they don't, they don't look at it. What are we supposed to do? Here's another meeting tonight, the topic is St. Paul's. Can we get to sort of the next step, blah, blah, blah? Who's here? Fourteen people. What do you want us to do? And I'm not trying to pick on you, you want us to go house to house? We're here, we're elected, we have to make decisions. At some point, the buck stops here, okay? We get out notice, we get out plans, we try to get into it. People don't want to participate, either they don't care, or they trust us.
But then tomorrow, we'll hear the rumor mills of people who will say stuff that has absolutely no concept of what's going on.
So again, I urge you to go on, go on our website, look at the plan.
The, the information is out there.
I mean, I just heard it tonight about what was going on, and I knew this thing was, was going on months ago, but I haven't been, you know, current with it.
I urge you to continue to participate, and look at the plans. Get your neighbors to look at the plans.
They tell by legal.
I tell.
Not today, but by...
All right, thank you. I think, Leon, did you have something?
Neil Stiller, Huntington Road. I'm excited by the plans, but I'm pleased to hear what you said, Trustee Oliverbrook. I hear people saying, trustees, you want community input. The only input that I think is acceptable, if you're going to spend thirty, sixty, or a hundred, hundred million dollars, is a, is a bond vote by the residents. I'm, I'm concerned, with all this money going on, that, that I'm hopeful that you are not forgetting what's going on at five fifty-five Stewart. Remember, I think Mr. Levin, if that was his, if I have his name correct, said that the IDA has been disposable to their, to developers' applications for a pilot. So if that goes through, then the residents are going to be paying a chunk of increased real estate taxes. This week in Newsday, Newsday is talking about county executive Laura Curran.
Can we, again, you're stating something like it's a fact when it's not.
It's not a fact.
And that's going to get on the internet, and it's going to be in the paper. There is no fact that says your, your taxes are going up because of that apartment building. It's just not true. It's not true.
Can I address the hundred million dollars for St. Paul's? I don't think anyone ever said St. Paul's would cost a hundred million dollars either. So, I know we throw some things around up here as we're talking, I just don't want, again, the, that to end up in the paper that, you know, Deputy Mayor just, Truvey said it's a hundred million dollar project. You know, we don't want to trap anybody, like they said, we're having an open discussion. No, no, yes, it's, it's...
No, no, they...
But, but the truth, the only thing is, it won't come up as she stated someone's opinion. They'll say, you said it. So I'm just saying, we don't want you to be misquoted here either. Saying it, we spent a hundred million dollars, we're not, so...
What I recall was, Mr. Levin said that the IDAs have been, I forget his exact word, but they've been...
They grant IDAs, yes. They grant IDAs.
Yeah, but he said they've been disposable, or they've been, they've been favorable to many of the developers' applications. Okay, I, I didn't say, I didn't think he said, but, in fact, he urged residents to go to the IDA hearing. But it, but it's something to keep in mind, it's something... Laura Curran's thing, it's in Newsday, the, the senior county assessor said that, that there's, there's, we could see a big rise in our property taxes, that's two. Three, we all know what's, what happened to last December with Congress, they passed the limit on the ten thousand dollar assault limitation to state level of taxes. So there are three things not, to keep in mind, whether it's thirty, whether it's sixty, whether it's a hundred, whatever it is, please keep these in mind. And I think the best way for resident input is a vote, a bond vote by the residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Norris?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. Still there. I'm Bob Royce, Huntington Road. I'm listening to this, and I go along with, I guess, the consensus here, and try and find some sort of use. But I want to go back to the presentations that were presented, and in fact, I went to both of them. In fact, I took a picture of the chart they had there as to the estimated cost.
That was just a total example guess, that had no reality, as we said, over and over.
Okay, well, they, they, the principal, estimated cost in principle alone, sixty-five million dollars. Interest on it was twenty-three million dollars, now we're up eighty-eight, right? I don't know how many times I've been here in this, in this chamber, or I've heard a project that immediately... a project that immediately went over. They found other things, then it went over, then they found other things on top of the other thing, and then went over. I don't want to see this becoming a big hole, and just shoveling money in, and keep shoveling money in.
So the best, the best way to avoid that is to involve the consultants that we're actually talking about here tonight?
But the consultants can't be, can't look inside the wall.
No, what they can do, I'll tell you what they can do. We presented a concept that had a bunch of different functions inside it. What these guys can do is say, listen, for that kind of project, it's going to cost X. If we're not comfortable with that, if we think it's too much money, if we think sixty million dollars, or whatever, is too much, guess what? We're not going to include those things in the building, which is why we say it's completely fungible, and you were at all of the...
That's SFA.
Yeah, and you were at all the, the presentations, so you know. So the idea is that nothing is set in stone, what we want to use by hiring, what the information we want to use by hiring these guys, is what is the true scale of the project, and what is the return on the investment? So, saying that it's sixty, or saying that it's a hundred, or saying, is extremely premature. We want to get a sense of that.
These figures, these figures are talking about here, just at a twenty-year bond per city, it would cost four point four million dollars a year, we would have to generate three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars a month, right, in income. I don't know what the hell we'd be selling here, or paneling, inhaling it, make that kind of income. That's only for the principal interest.
Right.
And if it goes up beyond that, you're the sky's limit. Also, I threw a, a four request that, that made it to the village. I want to know exactly how many taxpayers there actually are in this village. There's about twenty-two thousand residents, but as far as taxpayers go, the count is sixty-five hundred and sixty-eight residential taxpayers. Eight hundred and forty-eight commercial taxpayers. Grand total of seven thousand four hundred and sixteen taxpayers in this village that's going to get the bill. So please keep that in mind. When people say, representing in twenty, it's only that amount of people who are actually going to pick up the bill for...
Well, I'll ask you for your input. What do you want us to do? Do you want us to take the building down?
Actually, I voted for that last time.
Okay, that's your input, I appreciate that. There are plenty of people who feel that way. There are plenty of people who will spend, you know, four thousand dollars on their taxes to get a rec center. There are plenty of people who will spend eight thousand dollars on their taxes to get something else.
You have a section of, of, of the residents in Garden City. You've got about, it's almost a third. You can break it up into three, three parts. People below, at school age, below eighteen years of age, probably one-third, then you have the business class in the middle, then you have the seniors at the top, almost a third breaking up. Which means, who's picking up this thing? Are these people, are, are just seven, seventeen hundred people, taxpayers? The wage earners and the seniors who are working, who are living on sixteen bucks. When you're saying that you've got people who are willing to spend this kind of money, it's not going to fall on the seniors, you can't, you just don't have that kind of money.
To come back to center, Mr. Doros, I mean, I think what we're trying to say here tonight is we're trying to hire experts that are in top of their field to give us the best information so we can come to the best conclusion. And hearing your point that public projects are difficult to manage, I want to tell you they're not impossible to manage.
Not impossible.
The expertise, the expertise that we're looking at has, has the ability to give us that, and we can bring in projects that are on time, in budget, and possibly the world, and we've had that experience in this community already. So, we hear what you're saying, we hear what you're saying, but one of the ways to get to that responsible decision-making is to get this information.
There's another thing that wasn't on, on the agenda, the fact that you say it was going to come in stages, right? You've got a stage one, and then a stage two, or whatever. I have, I don't see it on the agenda, is what the course of stage one is going to be, what this course of stage two, you've got it in front of you, but I, we don't have it out here.
Sorry. It's forty-five thousand, and then roughly seventy, seventy-five thousand.
Oh, seventy-five thousand.
That's the second stage.
That's the second stage. What is the second stage?
That's more the financial end of the analysis.
And is it going to be more money on top of it after half these people make the presentation about it, like it did last time?
No, still...
Remember, we had a hundred thousand dollars spent, and then it cost the extra twenty-five thousand dollars to have them make the presentation?
No, we're going to build that into the contract.
Okay. I'm asking, because last time we didn't.
By the way, what, what, what do you mean, last time, we didn't do what?
He's talking about the, the A AAA...
They, they...
When they, when they, the slideshow and whatever. Was the hundred thousand, and the extra twenty-five thousand dollars for the, for the presentation?
By the way, if I could just make two comments of things that you've said. First of all, I wish they never had put the sheet up there as far as with costing numbers and everything else like that, not because we're hiding anything. Because what happens is, is that part of the reason that the board has worked for, that it is going to, is rather than just throwing out numbers, which I have seen done for so many years, rather than just saying, oh, it'll probably cost this and that, or whatever, and I hear them all the time, rather than doing that, what I think makes sense is, is for us to get to a point to where we have a pretty good idea of what the approximate cost would be. And once we have that idea, then I think it makes sense to sit there and to say what those numbers might be. So, myself personally, I wish they never had that, those boards up there, I wish they could have just taken them down as soon as I saw them, because people all of a sudden fix it and say, oh, no, this is what you said, this way. No, they were trying to give examples, that's the first thing. The second thing that you talked about was the aspect of who's going to support this and who's not going to. I'm going to be conservative and say, I've spoken to over thirty people about this, not only who live in the west, but throughout the village. What's interesting was, is that the vast majority of them support this, and they support it in different ways. People with young kids say, that would be something great that I can see my kids do. People who have older children say, you know what? That's some place that my teenagers, whatever, could go. But I also spoke to many people who are older, probably like myself, I've become one of the older people, where my kids are all grown up, they don't live at home anymore. Somewhere along the way, I left, in, in my industry, I became an old timer, how that happened, I don't know. As a matter of fact, tomorrow I will be in, in the finance industry thirty-one years, because my first day was October nineteenth, nineteen eighty-seven, so if you want to pick a day to start a business, that's a fun day. But, the one thing I will tell you, is that even the older people said to me, this is something that I could see that we can, if it is worthwhile, which would enhance the community that I love, and also will enhance my property values that I have. So will I be willing to pay for that? Absolutely, yes. I just want to be part of, now again, I'm sure that there's a certain percentage of people who don't want to spend, I'm dying more on anything, I understand that, but again, the overwhelming response that I'm receiving is that they will support something if they think that it's something that's worth, worth supporting.
Ladies, so they said here that this company is going to assist in gathering public input. How is a lot of public input going to be gathered? Some be questioning, or what?
Did you hear when they presented?
Yeah, he, he went through a couple...
They do lots of different things. They go to meetings, they plan meetings, they do surveys, they do all sorts of, they, they go to, they'll go to Sports Hub, they'll go to Island Garden, they'll see what the usage is, they get a whole feel for what's...
But that, that, that's not, that's not the public input.
I don't, I think you didn't hear me.
You didn't hear me.
I just said, they will have meetings, they will meet with people, they will go to the POAs, they will go to rec commission, who are people, and they will also do general market surveys.
And with all due respect to your office, you are also in favor of knocking the building down, so pretty much every, any deal that we want to spend, you're going to stay the least.
Yeah, but you're saying that we're going to meetings. You just made the announcement that, look to meetings, look who's happy to meet.
What, what, what does that?
The last time we did a mail...
That's a pretty good turnout when we did the presentation.
That we did a mailing last time, and we had a pretty good turnout as far as respondents to that mailing. And that mailing was done less than five years ago, and it pertained to everything in the village, including St. Paul's.
The building, how many, how many... It was done many years ago.
No, 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 no.
No, that was...
Rec department did the use, or...
All the rest of the...
Yes, how many, how many people responded to that?
Huh?
How many people responded to that?
I don't know, it's low, it probably isn't.
I know the number, do you know the number?
I don't. I'd say about forty percent.
You, you say we got a pretty good response, okay?
About eighty percent?
No, about nine hundred people.
Nine hundred, out of the...
Close to nine hundred.
Mostly it's just, it was statistically valid.
No, no, I understand that.
Statistically valid, huh?
Yeah. So nine hundred out of six, uh, over seven thousand houses, nine hundred people.
It's the same thing with meetings and stuff like that.
I, I, I'm not arguing with you, I'm pointing out, we have to make decisions. We get input, we ask people to participate, we put things in the paper, we put things on the website.
I understand.
What is it that we are missing?
Participate.
We can only do so much.
I understand.
If people don't want to listen, if they don't want to go to a meeting, if they don't want to participate, that's not our fault.
Are they also going to take into, in the fact of neighboring businesses within, within the area?
Yes.
Yeah.
Other words, like...
They, they look at my... Because they knew we were all about that when they were here, and it was... There's ten of them around the area, and half...
Every time, they don't know about that.
And all marketing, and sixteen athletic facilities within, within the area.
Yes, they talked about a whole...
Yes. They, so...
We talked them around, they saw everything. We may, we may, we may wrap them up in, into the pool and then test them.
Because again, when you're talking about all the athletic facilities around here, you're also talking, you have to talk about what the, what size of the athletic facilities, what do they have available, everything else like that. So that's what these people do. What they do is they sit here and they analyze based upon what we're considering putting in there, once they sit there and can get their information and say, okay, fine, how does this fit in to not only the city, but the surrounding communities? That's what the entire presentation that they gave us was.
And they had the bottom line, then we compete with them. Then we compete with them, or we're just adding to, you know...
That's part of the...
That's what they're going to do.
That's what they're going to do.
That's right. I mean, I'd rather, if, if, if we have something here that enables more people to come to us, and then we add another closing, two or three businesses in town, because they know, we, we're closing down taxpaying facilities, and we guess...
That's not our goal, we're not building a gym.
It's, yeah, it's literally all... Well, as I say, I think you and I, and a lot of people in this community are just waiting to see what the results of these studies...
So always, so...
That's why, that's why you want to hire top-tier experts.
Right. Fine, I just, I just don't want to spend another monies and monies and monies and monies like we did last night.
Mr. Boros, here's, here's the reality. The reality of it is, is that if we want to sit there and come to a conclusion, we're going to have to spend the money. And here's the other reality.
Of course you need it.
The other reality is, not everyone is going to be happy with whatever the decision is made. I don't care if you sat there and walked to every single person in the entire village and gave them an opportunity. Whatever decision is finally made with St. Paul's, not, you're not going to get a hundred percent of the people who are going to be behind it, okay?
Yeah, it's something...
So what we, 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 we're a pretty good cross-section, we, you know, we have someone who really wants to preserve maybe a square foot, I'm just exaggerating, you know, someone who'll do twenty percent, someone forty percent, put this in, put that. That's what we work, that's how we approach this. What can we do that tries to give something to this group, give something to that group, give something to this group? That's what we try to do.
And, and, well, we...
Anyone else?
We're just saying...
And the information is out there, so, I mean, the information's out there.
Information on what exactly?
On, on everything that we're doing.
It's on the website.
It's on the website.
Yeah, I, I agree, we do it for all the things...
But to your point, people don't look at that, people need to look at that stuff. That's all, that's all I'm saying. If you can convince some of your neighbors and people that aren't looking at it, to look at it, maybe we can get more involved.
The other thing, a little might want to add is, again, the goal of hiring this firm is to try to minimize the cost to the taxpayers, right? See what we can do, what we can use, what revenue can be generated, because obviously it can be a cost associated with this project. What can we do to minimize the cost to the taxpayers, recognizing that there are residents that are, that are on, on our fixed income, right? So, recognizing that, do we know what we can do?
As far as sports facilities go, who probably never used the facility?
We have...
Well, you, you can't make a statement, you're making a generalized statement like that. We may never use sports facilities. But you can't, you can't...
It's not just sports, let's be clear, okay? It's a lot of things. There's cultural, there's sports, there's education, we're trying to build in a lot of different things.
See, let's see how it's faced, Charles.
Yes, absolutely.
We agree, that's what this, that's what the company is going to tell us, what, what would work and what doesn't work.
But I just say, I don't, you don't...
Can we see if anyone else has comments? Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I just like the comment that, you need my name again? Steel...
I wasn't sure.
Anything that you do is going to cause cost and inconvenience to get to any kind of goal. It's the same thing that people are probably going to see, and I don't want to turn this into a third track thing, but even with that, there's going to be pain and inconvenience while they build that. But four years or five years from now, when it's done, people are going to realize what it has accomplished. I've seen it with the Second Avenue subway going up on Second Avenue, I've seen it with the Seven Line going to the Hudson Yards. You're not familiar with it? Take the Seven Train to the very end now, with children all the way on Twelfth Avenue, go upstairs and see what has been built there, only because they put a subway underneath. That would not have been built, the subway didn't get there first. And you'll see, there's going to be, whatever you decide on building is, it'll cost money, I'm probably never going to use most of it, my kids are too old to probably use most of what ends up there, maybe my grandkids will use it. I'll get something out of it. But anything we do, in some way, if it ever gets done, will help the residents, whether their house is worth more, people want to come here because they have that facility, but I think people need to see past the initial, whatever million-dollar price tag it ends up being, and, um, look at it that way. Eventually, we'll get to an end, and then we'll look back at all this and see what we accomplished.
That's good comment.
Thank you.
Like what the seniors said, if you build it, they will come. Well, actually, I'm not sure, anybody else want to? Okay? Okay, um, I, I, I would like to actually take these guys, we're going to lose them.
I'm third.
Can I get, can we suspend the rules and make a motion?
Yes, sir. Is it proposed that the mayor be authorized to execute a contract in substantially the form, which is before you now, because I know that a number of trustees had suggestions for...
With additions for, you know, explicitness of our public meetings, and, and more additional explicitness on public meetings, and timing was also a comment, too.
I have also provided you with a number of suggestions...
Our standard...
For our first...
Yes, please. Amy?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We also discussed funding, if it's approved, a transfer from contingency for a dollar amount.
Certainly, you can do that. So you need two resolutions. One, transferring funds from contingency to the appropriate account, and then authorize the mayor to execute the agreement in substantial form with the board.
With these changes.
All right, go ahead. Mr. Tru Bay makes that motion? Any second? Deputy Mayor Tru Bay, all those in favor?
The nominee transfer being?
The forty-five or the whole?
I would suggest the fees and an additional amount for expenses, reimbursable expenses.
Hundred thirty thousand?
Yes.
Hundred thirty thousand.
And so a second motion on moving the funds from contingency amount of hundred thirty thousand. Trustee Delaney makes that motion. Trustee Bolbrook seconds, all those in favor?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Shoot around another.
Okay, so what was the last thing?
Yeah, this is just a, something I thought we should talk about. To me, it's pretty common that you have sort of term limits, I mean, just for chairpersons. You get different blood, you get people more involved within the committees. I don't know how anybody else feels about it.
Well, I don't quite understand it. Is your, is your thought process that if someone is the chairperson, they should only be a chairperson for ten years? And then someone else should be the chair, but they can still stay on the committee?
Yes.
Or do they have to then leave the committee?
No, only as chairperson.
Okay, but the only reason I say that is because years ago, I was on a group, which I had never been in, had the situation involved with, where you can only serve for a certain number of years, and then once that time period came, you had to leave the group. So to me, I think with this, again, especially with many of these people who have such specialties, that if in any event we wanted to sit there and have, after a period of time, whether it was seven years, or ten years, whatever, have a new person be left to chair, I have no problem, because I think having a new person as a chair from time to time brings fresh ideas, whatever. So that I'm supportive.
That was all I was.
As long as you can stay on that.
Yeah, as long as, no, if we rely on volunteers, it's hard enough to find people, whether it's ADRB or just someone. I think it's good because it kind of builds a second bench on some level. You know, people leave the boards, whether, you know, deceased or otherwise. And so it's good to have people with experience kind of running a meeting and things like that, that's all I was.
I understand. I agree. Helps to keep the community active and involved and getting another second opinion on, different opinion on things from different chairpersons. I would be in favor of the term limits, and I would think of limiting it to seven years.
Can you shake the tongue with the person who's doing this? I feel that that person should be getting his chair for the second years.
Personally, I don't find that ever works, because once someone is the chairman, the other board members don't.
You don't want to vote.
They're not going to get sick, it just.
Because they become your friend. And I, I mean, listen, I will say this right now, I was president of the organization. When I stepped down, I know I had taken the organization from here to here, but the preceding people that followed me did things in areas that were not my expertise, and I thought, wow, they really took it to the next level. So to me, I think that if we're going to put this in there, it has to be a mandatory term. It has to be like, if a person is the chair, you can be chair for seven years. After the seven years, you can then stay on the board, but someone else would be the chair. Because you could never have the people on the board say, okay, fine, now we're going to vote whether or not to keep you one as a chair. You would be putting those other people in two awkward situations.
Actually, I think the way it works now is these boards appointing the chair, don't they?
Other than zoning.
The code actually provides for the mayor and board to appoint the chairs of the ADRB, the funding board, the zoning board, as they're called.
Never happens, it's never turned around. Again, I would, I would not vote on it, but it was just, I would like the idea if you have, trustee B's office kind of drafts something.
Do you wish one year, two year, three year will be the maximum?
I like so, I think so. Because the reality of it is that one, it actually most often takes you a year to really get it to get your feet down.
You may wish our office to draft a local law for your consideration that would provide a maximum of seven years as the term of the chairperson.
Yeah, draft some rule?
Yeah.
The only thing I've noticed that we don't have on anything is we don't have any standards of conduct. And in this day and age, if someone is convicted of tax fraud or worse though, we have no way to remove people.
There are a number of different avenues depending on what occurs. A person who commits felony forfeits his public office.
Are those boards a public office?
Number of them are, yes, sir. The North Fields, boards that are empowered to take action, the planning board, and I guess, and architecture, all three boards are empowered. Environmental, I believe, is advisory only, but the other three boards are empowered to take action. So they would qualify as public offices, which is why they have terms of office.
Is that for felony?
For felony, it would vacate the office, and there are provisions with removal of public officers for misconduct, somewhat complex, and you need to go to a separate court, but there are procedures for the removal of public officers.
Be very difficult to do. I mean, I would think, I know in our business, there's always that reputational risk kind of thing that unless it's defined, it's very hard to.
That the mayor had been working on proposing a new code of ethics, so I think that's also part of what's in the works.
Well, that's why it kind of came to the forefront.
But if the board wishes, I could give you a short memo on how a public officer, a few of these offices are under competition.
Would help just information.
I think that would be helpful, definitely.
Thank you, Mr. Moro.
Yes, sir.
During the executive session.
Yes, right now, we need to get advice of counsel on a few things, not even executive session.
Correct, just advice and help.
So I would entertain a motion to dismiss. Trustee Tru Bay makes that motion, seconded by trustee Delaney, all those in favor? Again, buy a lottery ticket and you help pay for St. Paul's.